Good evening, everybody. Welcome. I'd like to call the Plan Commission meeting to order on June 26, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Crystal, roll call, please.
Okay, Commissioner Grimmer.
Here.
Commissioner Crinkie.
Here.
Commissioner Merrick.
Here.
Commissioner Johenski.
Here.
Commissioner Schultz.
Here.
Commissioner Cahalan. Mayor Aker.
Here.
Amy Barrows. Thank you.
All right, so first order of business is our minutes, so we've got May 29, 2024, minutes to act on.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion or changes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Okay, minutes are passed. Now, item five, citizens' comments for items that are on the consent agenda. This is item six, A, B, and C. If you're interested in commenting on anything on the consent agenda, please raise your hand or come right up. Going once, seeing none, citizens' comments for items on the consent agenda are now closed, so consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Okay, consent agenda is passed. So if you're here for item six, A, known on nutrition or business operation for same address, well, 440 Wells Street, Andrew Ellis, for software as a service technology company, or 600 Milwaukee Street, DMK Investments, you've been approved. You can stay if you wish, or you can leave if you want to free up a parking spot. Thank you. Okay, seven, we've got a public hearing. Public hearing number one, text amendments to Chapter 52, City of Delafield zoning ordinance related to the CBD two central business district standards. So there's text amendments to Chapter 52 for the Delafield zoning ordinance related to the CBD two central business district standards. And this is to amend the code. Is there anybody who wishes to speak to the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, the public hearing for Chapter 52 text amendments is now closed. Citizens' comments for any items other than the consent agenda, so that'd be anything at all. Anybody like to comment anything else on our agenda or life in general? Okay, seeing none, moving right along. Citizens' comments are now closed. So then unfinished business, item nine, A. 2840 Heritage Drive, owner Heritage Hillside, applicant Nikki Cook and Tom Howard. This is for Aldi. Applicant is requesting site plan and appearance and business plan of operation approval to convert OfficeMax into a retail grocery store to be occupied by Aldi. Do we have someone from the applicant here? Could you please come up? If you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself and name and address.
Good evening, everybody. Tom Howard, Aldi Inc., 9342 South 13th Street, Oak Creek, Wisconsin, 53154. And then we've got the landlord as well.
Close the button.
Greg Hughes with Heritage Hillside, 2840 Heritage Drive.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Would you like to give an introduction?
Okay, so this request was reviewed at the April meeting. I'm not going to go through all of the components again. At that meeting, Plan Commission did approve the facade improvements, subject to the site plan coming back to this meeting after Public Works had an opportunity to review traffic flow, parking. And then they did also ask for a traffic impact analysis, which was done and also further amended with Public Works, at the Public Works request. And then the applicant did submit their tenant usage plan, including all of the tenants that are on the property and what type of business they are, and then the square footage of actual use area versus storage. And after reviewing that, it does appear that they do have sufficient parking on site to accommodate all of the uses. And the traffic engineer also came to that same conclusion based on his analysis. So parking should be good. And then at the last meeting, we did also talk about the mechanicals on the rooftop. And they submitted a rendering that showed what it would look like from different vantage points and that there would be very little to no visibility of the mechanicals on the roof for the new Aldi site, which will have all new mechanicals. It was brought to our attention after the meeting that a vantage point was not provided from, and Mike, if you can go to my screen, that would be helpful. Oops. And I apologize, I know we haven't talked about this, Tom and Greg, but from the Walmart site. So as you're driving down the main road in front of Walmart, it appears that the vegetation behind the building does screen the mechanicals pretty well. But if you're driving on the private road behind Walmart, you can see, you're at the top of the hill, and as you drive down, you can see it. So I guess it's a matter of whether or not Plan Commission cares about this back road that's a private drive off of Walmart having that visibility. And we were provided pictures of that vantage point, which I will show you. So this would be the one vantage, and it's, you know, it's the viewing bug and goose area from that private drive. The other picture, which is the main road coming off of Walmart, well, I wouldn't call it the main road, but the back road coming off of Walmart, you can see that the trees do a pretty good job of screening the mechanicals. So as part of your action, if you could just consider that and whether or not you're going to consider any other improvements. And then as part of the Public Works recommendations, and actually, they approved the recommendations that came from the traffic impact analysis, they did make a couple of improvements to the site plan, which includes, rather than having, I'm not exactly sure how to explain this, in aisle and an out aisle separately, they are widening that aisle and you'll be able to go both directions on it. But then, when you do come in off of Heritage Drive and you need to take a right, they are increasing the turning radius there in order to accommodate emergency vehicles, and that has been reviewed and approved by the engineering staff, and the fire department is comfortable with that. And then they're also extending the raised median in between that in and exit lane, so that people, so when you do turn right, it has to be a right turn only, so that people don't incidentally exit from that aisle and then try to cross traffic that's entering the site. So it'll force people, if they do try to exit on an in-only lane, that it'll force them to go right and around, if that makes sense. And then also, Public Works did ask Art Baumann to review revised impact analysis based on traffic, addressing different peak hours for traffic. And as part of that, he is requesting a right turn overlap signal at the intersection with Highway 83. And that would be, the cost would be at the responsibility of the applicant. His analysis does anticipate a significant enough percentage of traffic increase going that direction. So with that, when we get to the recommendation section, we would recommend that your action, if you approve this request, that you do go ahead and approve it, that doesn't need to come back here, but that the, that matter in particular, go back to Public Works for final action to determine whether or not they should or shouldn't include that improvement, so that the decision isn't made by just a single member of that, of that particular committee. Other than that, we'll do signage as a separate agenda item, but I think those are really the major changes. Is there, am I missing anything?
Nope, that covered everything.
So if you do choose to approve the site plan and appearance and business plan of operation at the last meeting, Plan Commission did not take specific action on the business plan of operation either. I would just recommend three conditions. One of them does, I am asking for an amendment from my staff report. So the first one would be that the applicant shall comply with all recommendations provided by the Public Works Committee, including Art Baumann's recommendations from the updated traffic impact analysis. I would like to add, unless Public Works Committee determines otherwise at their July meeting, and that either way, Public Works shall review the recommendations of Art Baumann. And then any costs related to such recommendations is the responsibility of the applicant. And then the applicant shall comply with all conditions of the engineering memo prepared on June 18, 2024. That's just a matter of some extra final plans and permitting. And then if any new exterior lighting is proposed, it shall be submitted for review and approval by Plan Commission prior to installation. I don't believe any lighting was submitted, correct?
No.
Okay. And then I just add that if you're going to require any additional improvements to screen the rooftop mechanicals, that that be part of your action.
I think the applicants did a great job addressing the parking issues we raised at our last meeting. I compliment you on that.
Is the signage a separate motion, Amy?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Is there a, I'm just curious about the sign-in from what I saw. Is that normal? I mean.
The signage?
The blockage or the, you know, on top of that roof, that's what we're talking about, right?
Oh, the rooftop mechanicals. Well, I mean, it's really up to you. With new development, for example, 705 Genesee Street and Olive Garden, we do ask for some screening so you can see it on 705 Genesee. It's kind of like a solid fence-type structure. With existing buildings and development, it's really up to you on the significance of improvements and whether they should or shouldn't have to make those improvements.
Okay.
I'm normally in favor of that, but I think this is such a challenge to do this one. When you're up on that hill, I think that the screen would look worse than probably what you're looking at right now today. It would have to be pretty significant.
And you're talking about five seconds of driving?
Yeah. You're down that hill pretty fast.
You probably shouldn't be turning up to the left anyway.
Yeah.
And it's just two units, the existing tenants that have that visibility coming down the drive from the back of Walmart. Those rooftop units would remain. Those aren't our rooftop units that are proposed, and we're not reusing any of the rooftop units. We just have our refrigeration evaporation coils and one large A-shack that's centered on the back of the building behind the facade.
Oh, wow.
I'm good. Well, I can put out a motion, but I might need your help, Amy, with number one, if I can remember that. But motion to approve business plan of operations, site plan and appearance application, subject to the following conditions. The applicant shall comply with all recommendations provided by the Public Works Committee, including Art Baumann's recommendations from the updated traffic impact analysis, unless.
Unless Public Works Committee determines otherwise at their July meeting. This probably isn't the best written way, but either way, Public Works Committee shall review and confirm the recommendations of Art Baumann.
That, and any costs related to such recommendations is the responsibility of the applicant. Condition two, the applicant shall comply with all conditions of the engineering memo prepared on June 18, 2024. And condition three, if any new exterior lighting is proposed, it shall be submitted for review and approval by Plan Commission prior to installation. And I'll also note that we are not requiring any improvements to screen the proposed mechanical equipment.
Second.
Is there any discussion or debate? I'll just add that I've not, I've gone to Aldi's a lot, but I've heard nothing but great things when this rumor started going around and it's becoming a reality. They've got a lot of fans in Delafield. I'll say that part, but all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? All right, well, you've got your.
Good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
We go right on to 10.
So you're going to be at next week's Public Works meeting on July 2?
Greg will be there. I'll be out of town.
Just wanted to make sure you knew it. It's on the.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, the 2nd, yeah.
Okay, next item up is Aldi's. Applicant is requesting a multi-tenant signage approval for the Walmart Center property at 2840 Heritage Drive. So what's this about, Amy?
Okay, so we did talk about this at the last meeting, too. They do need to amend the multi-tenant signage program, so we'll go through this. My recommendation is subject to the multi-tenant signage being approved, and that's next, that's the next agenda item. But just sticking with Aldi, they're proposing one wall-mounted sign on that facade that faces the parking lot. The sign would be approximately 75.24 square feet. That does comply with the size requirements of the code. It would be internally illuminated, and it would be bright yellow, orange, red, and dark blue. So that color scheme does not currently match the existing multi-tenant program, which is proposed to change. And then they are proposing the panel signs to add Aldi to the panel signs. And at the last Plan Commission meeting, you did state that you supported the color blue, trying to find that page.
While you're looking for that, I'll just say I announce these out of order. So I announced 10A, but we're talking about 9B. They're connected. So just keep those in mind, the fact that the multi-tenant signage, along with the permanent signage, are very related, so consider them anyways. So sorry about that.
So they have the dark blue panel sign, the rest of the sign is white on the freestanding sign. The last meeting, you did discuss your support for the blue background, since Aldi will be the main anchor tenant. And then they are proposing some temporary signage, which is included in the packet, but just know that is not part of your review and approval. The city administrator will have to review that, and they'll have to submit a separate application. Other than that, I think that covers their particular signage. My recommendation is to approve the signage, subject to the multi-tenant signage program being updated to accommodate existing and proposed signage, and that temporary signage shall be reviewed and approved by the city administrator and/or his designee.
And I'll just add some historical context to the fact that all these signs are lettered in red. We had the same situation on the Gulf Road development. It was really as these different commercial businesses were going in, and landscaping wasn't really developed. And it was kind of a trend in the 90s, early 2000s to limit colors and, you know, kind of dampen the noise. But as the landscaping's come up and other things have happened, just with taste, too, in general, we changed that signage program on Gulf Road, and although the Aldi might stand out right now, as the other tenants maybe adopt their new corporate logos and incorporate them in with the tenants, with the landlord's permission, of course, that'll even itself out.
I'll make a motion to approve the permanent signage, subject to the multi-tenant signage program being updated to accommodate existing and proposed signage. Temporary signage shall be reviewed and approved by the city administrator and/or his designee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Okay, item 9B is passed. So on the item 10A, so this is the multi-tenant signage program for the Walmart Center property.
Okay, so their multi-tenant signage program actually kind of matches what they have had on their site for quite some time as far as width and height and colors. I mean, they are still limiting the colors to red, white. Was there another one, red or white? And allowing illumination. However, the landlord is reserving the right to make exceptions for the anchors, tenants, which includes OfficeMax and Dairy Queen, and then the second-tier tenants, which would include Petco and Dollar Tree. They have quite a bit more frontage on the property. Related to size, layout, style, and color. And then they are also willing to consider national tenants to allow their standard logos for those. And then all window signage must be approved by the landlord also. So other than getting special approval from the landlord, signage does need to be individual letters mounted on a raceway with the raceway matching the facade of the building. Other than that, the details of their program are included in the packet, and so those will be kept on file for the property and expected to be met. What we, the recommendation is to approve the multi-tenant signage program as presented, and that individual tenant signage shall be, tenant signage affixed to the building will need to be reviewed and approved when the individual operation is presented for review and approval. And the owner has to sign their application, so that would confirm their approval.
So it's a two-step. One's the landlord, one's the city.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a record.
Okay, I'll make a recommendation to approve the multi-tenant signage as presented. Individual tenant signage affixed to the building will need to be reviewed and approved when the individual operation is presented for review and approval.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, say nay. Abstentions? Okay, multi-tenant signage is approved. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Appreciate all the work and help.
Yeah, get after it. Okay, item 10B, DLC 0800999008, 1550 Indian Spring Drive. Owner Greg and John Heyman. Applicant Greg Herriman. I'm sorry, you have to tell me how to say that. Am I close?
Hierman.
Herriman, all right, very good. Applicant has requested certified survey map for approval of the two land division for the purpose of creating an additional home site, including the creation of a flag lot. Amy, refresh our memories.
Yes. So we're going to keep this movie mov-, this movie, this meeting moving because we reviewed a lot of these last month. So we reviewed this application last month as a conceptual land division. Plan commission did determine that the flag lot was reasonable because it didn't have the appearance of a flag lot, and it fits the character of the neighborhood, and there's other examples in the surrounding area, and that they did have an, do have an existing driveway on that south end of the property that they would relocate for this purpose. Mayor Iker was the only member that was against the creation of the flag lot, but the rest of the members, I believe, did support it. Other than that, and if you have any other questions regarding what is being proposed here, I'm happy to answer those. We just have some minor surveyor and planner comments that need to be addressed. And also, maybe a bit of a bigger issue is sending the CSM to the DNR to make sure that the pond is not considered public and owned by the state rather than the owner. That would change the acreage, and both lots do have to meet the five-acre minimum requirement.
Would you like to introduce yourself and name an address and just add anything if you'd like? Just press the button and the green light will go on.
Glenn Ritz, South 407 Indian Spring Drive. We live just south of the property.
Okay.
I would be acquiring the needed land from Mr. Ritz.
Okay, and your name and address, please?
I'm sorry. Greg Herriman, West 297 North 931 Kingsway in the town of Delafield.
Okay. Is there any questions for the applicant or Amy?
Motion to recommend common council approve the certified survey map, which includes the creation of a flag lot, subject to compliance with law surveyor and planner comments prior to common council consideration.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Abstentions?
I'll just abstain since I wasn't here last, last time.
Dan Kalhein abstains. Okay. Your item has passed.
Thank you.
You bet.
I'm going to just, I'm going to give you, this letter includes a surveyor comments and my comments. You need to address those before you go to common council.
These are items that they won't be addressed.
Yes, and you can call me with any questions.
Okay, item 10C, DLC 0754983, 2872 Nagawicka Road, and DLC 07549840023000 Nagawicka Road, and DLC 07549840013100 Nagawicka Road. Owners David Frank and Michael and Stacy Snyder. Applicant David Frank is requesting certified survey map approval to reconfigure three lots that created an additional lot for the purposes of an additional home site.
Okay, so same thing. This project was reviewed conceptually at last month's meeting. There were some, there was some discussion regarding the orderly development of it, and typically, the ordinance doesn't recommend excessive lot depth versus width. But it is an existing situation, and there are several examples of that type of development in this area. So plan commission did consider that compatible with the surrounding area. And then also, the ordinance states that the size, shape, and orientation should be appropriate for the location of the subdivision for the type of development and use contemplated. And plan commission did also determine that that shape was compatible with the code as well. So if you look at the screen right now, there are three lots of record, a separate owner owning the middle lot. The applicant did provide their written documentation of approval of this land division, and then they're proposing to convert those three lots into four, which do all meet the width requirement, which the owner was struggling with in the past. And the reason for the orderly orientation that we discussed is the narrow point at the east side of Lot 3. And then as part of this land division, the owner does need to come in and apply for a zoning permit because there will be a house on, two houses on one lot. So, I'm sorry, there will be a lot with an accessory structure without a principal structure. So he'll need to have that zoning permit to convert that structure prior to the city recording the CSM, but he'll have it, they'll have it signed and ready to go. Other than that, there are, again, there are some minor surveyor and planner comments that need to be addressed prior to common council consideration.
Would you like to introduce yourself and add anything if you'd like?
Sure. David Frank, 2872 Nagawicka Road and 3100 Nagawicka Road. Really, just to remind everybody, the reason why that lot, where the 2872 house is on, is kind of comes to a point there, is because of how the hill in the back of the yard. So if you look at the back of the house, there's like a natural hill, and then also the tree line that's there. And so where the currently, the accessory building is, we would add a house on to the front of that, add on to that, and it'd all be one structure. And their back view of the back of the house is that whole back area. So trying to stay true to the whole comments that I had before, which were really, we don't want people looking into each other's backyards or looking into each other's houses.
I'll move.
Amy, just a question. I wasn't here last, last time. How does it work? I've got the Google Maps, so I see the three, where does the fourth, I'm missing. How does this work again? That there's a fourth lot?
Yeah, so if you look at the three lots, they're just tweaking the lot lines enough so that each of the lots have 200 feet of width on Nagawicka Road, and as part of that, they're getting an extra lot in there. So mostly, if you look on GIS-
Is the extra lot then at the south?
Yes. So if you look at GIS, you can see they have a house and a pool house. The pool house is fairly substantial.
Yep.
They would like to convert that into a residential structure. So that's really where they're cutting, they're putting a line in between those two structures, but doing it in a way that all the lots are 200 feet in width.
Okay, follow. God, thank you.
So these aren't, they look, they look like, they might appear to be really small lots that are long, but they're 200 feet of frontage.
Yeah, no, I'm very familiar. I live on Nagawicka, so I know. I was just trying to visualize it. I got it.
There was almost a motion out.
I'm sorry, I screamed.
I'll move. We recommend the common council approve the certified survey map, subject to compliance with all surveyor and planner comments prior to the common council, prior to common council consideration.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Welcome to the process.
It's been a journey.
Okay, item, make sure I don't miss one here. Item 10D, DLC 080099901516 and 13, 498 South Lappam Peak Road. Owner and applicant Scott and Mallory Urkey. Applicant is requesting feedback regarding a concept presentation to build an existing lot that would not abut a public road. We've got a theme going. Is the applicant here? Okay, come on up, please. And, but they're all different, trust me.
Yeah.
Right?
I don't want to be a theme.
Please introduce yourself and name an address.
Scott Urkey, address 498 South Lappam Peak Road.
Okay, Amy, please introduce this.
So right now, if you look on the, on GIS on the screen, the property owner owns three lots of record. The lot on the east-west side, which is abutting Lappam Peak and highlighted in yellow, is the existing lot with three acres that has the residence and an outbuilding on it. Then they also own this narrow strip. Well, so directly north of that yellow parcel is a strip of land that is public road right of way, designated for public road right of way with no improvements in it. So it is a city-owned lot, which was cut off from this lot to the south, the lot with the house on it. It was a certified survey map, and that road was dedicated at that time. Then as part of that CSM, it appears that they left a remnant parcel, which is the parcel to the east, which is 5.15 acres, and that lot doesn't abut a public road at all, except for that strip on the north end. Then the strip east of the public road, which is also highlighted in blue, is also owned by the owner, and it does not appear that that strip provides any access to the adjacent properties to the east. However, I am asking that they do that research and determine whether or not there's any access points. You think it does?
That's my neighbor with the 18 acres. He was up here for a prior one. I was hoping they would stay. But we've been there 30 years, and he's brought it up a couple times. When he first bought that property, he was supposed to come off of Lappam Peak Road and use that access. I don't know if it's been changed, but he did have an access easement off of Lappam Peak.
So I did have, because that deed to the adjacent property, the east, does have some language in it regarding an easement? And so I did have the city surveyor look into that, and he mapped out the access from the east?
Yeah, they currently come off Indian Spring Drive.
So it looked like that's what's included in the deed, but I agree with you, that strip, it seems like it should be doing something. So we do need to make sure that that's not an access strip. If it is for some reason, we can look at this a little bit differently. But what the applicant is asking to do is to build on that back lot, and there is an existing driveway on the south side of the property that abuts Lappam Peak. I don't know why it was constructed or why it wasn't improved, if the city stopped the improvements. You know, I can't find any information on that. But, so some things to consider is if you, so the ordinance, the land division ordinance, does say that every lot has to abut a public road for a distance of at least 30 feet. And then if the lot is considered a flag lot, which this isn't a flag lot, the flag lot provisions apply. And lots with an access only to an existing private drive or street shall be permitted only with the approval of the plan commission and only when permitted by the zoning code. And then in the zoning code, there's a provision that states that in order to obtain a building permit to construct a principal building on a vacant lot, which is something to consider. This is an existing lot that was created. They're not trying to create it. So the code says that in order to get a building permit, the vacant lot shall abut a public street or have a permanent easement, providing adequate vehicular access to the public street, and emergency services must be able to have adequate access to the lot. And then you'll need to consider whether or not you accept access through the easement. If you do not, then they would need to improve that strip on the north side and construct a public road that would then need to be maintained by the city long term. If you do allow the easement, then you may want to consider having that road vacated and absorbed within the certified survey map.
I have a few questions.
Yes.
That's what this is for.
And this is, this is a conceptual presentation to provide feedback. They have not submitted any kind of-
I know this land very well. I knew the owners that first built there, and they're the ones that did the lands, and I remember that. They were trying with, next to the, because it's right next to the creek, the access, and I read that you have to be so far back, the road edge has to be so back, far back from the edge, from the creek. And it does kind of slant towards the creek, too. So there's a problem there. They originally were, wanted to use that access to get to the lot in the back, but they decided that wasn't feasible. So then they put in that little access road so that they could get back to that big strip of land. And I remember when they cut all that out, the last previous owner before him put in the asphalt, put in the stone in it. Before that, it was, didn't have any stone, didn't have any asphalt. It was just a big swat cut out of it.
And to Laura's point, the oddly creek does run right along the edge of this, so it is not an ideal spot for an access point. I do think, though, are you referring to like DNR provisions?
Yeah.
I do believe the setbacks, you have to pitch it away from it, and then there are, there's ways to make it work, but it is very, it would be right up the road, or driveway would be right up.
And it exactly is, it is exactly at the southern end of the bridge.
And I'll put this up on GIS so you can see where that owner to the east does have access from the east. That's how they get to the property. So the, when I looked up the deed and it said that there was an access point, it maps, and you go to that easement, it's mapping this, well, there's all kinds of strips, but it's mapping this strip from, off of Indian Spring Drive.
Yep.
And then I guess the other option would be to not, if you approved the access on the south side through an easement, to not vacate the road in case you ever wanted to require a public road in the future. But it likely would only serve this parcel, which does have to be five acres because it's served by Septic System.
There's another problem, because their existing driveway is very close to that southern little road that they put in.
So the situation is there's a, there's a buildable lot, and there's a couple different avenues for them to make an improvement on it.
Yeah.
One of them would be to create a road.
Right.
That the city would own and maintain, costs associated with it and everything else. The other one would be to grant an easement to get there with a private drive. So we're not, we're not creating a flag lot. There's a lot that's there. We're not creating a weird situation. This was done in, what, the 70s?
1970, 17. 17, 2017.
So how to grant permission in the most optimal way for everybody involved to allow someone to improve a buildable lot is-
Well, there is an example right up on Indian Springs. There's three houses right in a row, and they have one private road going, and they feed off of that private road.
And we don't, we don't like doing that either, but you know, so we're trying to-
They're willing to maintain it. They made it according to what the fire department and everything wanted, so I don't have an issue with it.
I think what made the history a little difficult to track, too, is, so first of all, in the 70s, somebody came in and they did a bunch of CSMs in a row, like individual CSMs up the, up Lappam Peak. And then this was left as a remnant parcel, but then the owners did combine the lots by tax key number, which doesn't really have anything to do with legal lots of record, but it did become a single tax key number. And then it got split back out in 2017.
Yep.
So if you don't dig far enough back, it appears that it was potentially legally created in 2017, but it wasn't.
What's the history, because I'm naive in this area, why, why private drive easement? Why does that have problems? Because you're worried about neighbors someday fighting with each other, about maintaining it? Or, like on Oakwood Bay, right, there's a private drive, like five or six houses, and the city doesn't have to maintain it, and they're responsible for?
Right.
What's the downside to that?
It's probably on the deed, I would think.
I mean, some of it is, some of it is maintenance, although there's maintenance agreements in place, a lot of times that kind of stuff falls apart, emergency access. But also, it's, so if you, they're not proposing a flag ownership, but it's kind of the same thing in that you're creating these unorderly developments. I mean, ideally, you wouldn't have a house built right behind another house in this type of orderly function. Within a subdivision where it's organized, it's a little bit different. And I guess that would be my one comment, is you proposed, you put in a rectangular area where you might put a house, and it was kind of behind, in between, if you could put it a little bit further north, so it's behind your lot and not the, not the adjacent property to the south, and that would be ideal. But you just start, I mean, if you look around and you have all these little driveway strips that lead you into these isolated pockets, it's-
So, but the biggest thing that struck a chord with me was your comment on emergency services, right? Like you have to, at that point, if they don't plow or whatever, and you have an emergency, it's a problem.
Right.
Right?
Yes. And sometimes that does become an issue. So in this case, we'll probably ask for a turnaround driveway. Not necessarily like a roundabout, but a way for the emergency vehicles to get in and out and around and ask them to plow and maintain it.
Is there currently an ordinance that states how long a driveway has to be before you have to bump for an emergency vehicle?
No, it's, there's not, other than the, any lot that's accessed through a private easement has to be reviewed for that purpose.
Okay.
Otherwise, you would be abutting a public road and it would be managed.
Amy, I think your comment on, given this is unique and an exception, as a courtesy to have the house orient more behind the owner's home makes sense. And maybe that should be part of his calculus. And then to me, it seems that the easement is the way to go. I mean, yeah, they may not.
I'm in line with that, too. I'm thinking the easement. Do you have a preference?
I think the easement, I mean, the city property right now is wet.
Yes, that's not the best soils either.
Nope.
I'd hate to see a driveway go in there.
And it floods.
Yeah, in the time I've been there, which has only been a couple of months, I mean, I maintain it, so it looks decent, but it's wet. So you have to watch, obviously. It wouldn't be a great place. You'd have to have a lot of fill. Plus then I think you get into the fear of close to the crick and what you got to worry about with the crick. So right now, the way the second driveway is, and once again, I'm not sure how it was done or what was done. We've only talked to the few neighbors. That's the ideal situation. That's why I kind of just placed the house as a reference at the end of that driveway, so everybody would understand. But once we knew we could get an easement through there, then we'd look at placing the house differently, for sure.
Could that be defined on a, that can be defined on a CSM where the buildable area was?
So you could have a building envelope on there, and maybe it's just the north half of your property. And then if you're going to put a building envelope on there, you'd want to account for the setbacks right of way. So just have a typical envelope with your setbacks, but cut off the south half. And then if he does vacate the public road, if that's part of what you want, he does have to go through a road vacation process, and then they would be done sort of simultaneously. The road vacation wouldn't be effective until your certified survey map is recorded. But the road vacation does need to go, I don't, I can't remember exactly, it needs to be introduced at council, brought back to plan commission, then there's a lengthy public notice period, and then it goes back to council. I think it's a 45-day notice period perhaps, so we'll have to work through that.
And check for any access easement that might exist on that.
And so that should be done through like a title search of that strip and look at the adjacent property to the east to see if they have anything on their property.
Okay. The vacate the road, is that, help me out on that, to vacate the road?
So we would actually, actually, you would get the land then, so.
Oh, you're saying the city piece?
On the north side.
Gotcha, okay.
There's really no reason for the city to keep that then? I mean, it's up to the city. They have to make that decision. But if there's no reason to keep it, then it would get vacated and absorbed by you. And so you would do a certified survey map, and it would have two lots. The lot on the west side would include the right-of-way in your house, and then on the east side would include the strip in your vacant lot.
Due to the, I mean, we're talking about a creek and the unsuitability of the soil. We could, as a part of that vacation, we could define that as like a conservancy area or something that was unbuildable, right? If we wanted to.
It actually might be. I think it might be in the conservancy.
Just something to keep in mind as this moves through the process.
You could definitely put the, well, there will be a shore setback. You could put that on there, or you could just keep the entire 60-foot-wide strip conservancy easement or conservancy land.
I do, talking with staff, there's not a big, there's no one, no one's running toward adopting another, an 80-yard road that we have to plow and maintain going down into the future. And it's not the best spot for asphalt anyways.
Or cars. Yep.
Is everyone in concurrence that that's the general direction?
That's the way to go is the easement.
Okay, so you've got a little work to do and work with Amy. Is there any other questions you have for us?
No, that was the major part of the question. I really appreciate everybody's help there. I was at a loss. I couldn't tell you which one to go.
It was a little bit of work.
Yeah, so I appreciate everybody's help. Thank you very much.
All right, we'll see you again, I'm sure. Okay, next item up. DLC 0783009, 2450 Nagawicka Road East, owner Terry and Joyce Giles. Applicant is requesting feedback regarding a concept presentation to amend the text of Chapter 52 zoning ordinance of municipal court code to allow an accessory structure in excess of the size limitations in 52110 permitted accessory uses of structures in all residential districts, something we just changed. So we've got a first challenge. Let's hear them out. You want to come up and introduce yourself, please? Yeah, just press the button, the green light will go on, and then you can release it. There you go.
Good evening. My name is Terry Giles. I live at 1607 Weber Court in Harland. Reason for my being here today is that I would like to build a garage, a hobby barn, on the property at 2450 Nagawicka Road East, which currently is part of the old Weber, excuse me, Miller Estate. The reason that I want to build the garage is I currently have a 2,700-square-foot garage in Waukesha, which I consider my hobby barn. My hobby is working on it and restoring antique tractors and classic automobiles. I've, I now serve a new role in life. I am a caretaker husband, and it's time for me to move my hobby from Waukesha to my home here in Adelafield. We own four properties at the intersection of Nagawicka Road and Weber Court. All properties are contiguous, with the exception of the fact that somebody put a road through them, so they're not exactly contiguous today.
Would you like Amy to bring it up and give an overview of geography so that you can, okay, build off of that?
Okay, sure. So I'll look at, that's not the one I want to use.
Here, you're looking at the intersection of Weber Court and Nagawicka Road. The one in yellow is 2450 Nagawicka Road East, and that's the property that we'd like to place a hobby barn. The original barn was fairly large that I had planned, and I took it in to get it permitted with Scott. And when I got there, he said, "Well, you must realize that the code has changed. What you had planned is no longer going to fit, and you're going to have to do some downsizing." Well, I tried downsizing, and actually, we had the building completely designed. It was all ready to go into construction with Morton Builders. And so we tried to downsize it. Originally, it was, I think, 1,980 square feet. It's a four-door garage. We had a loft. We had stairs going through it. And after talking to Scott, we eliminated the loft, we eliminated the stairs. It's now got now maybe a five-and-a-half-foot attic that it would have. And the size of it currently is 36 by 55. That's 1,980 square feet. That would be about 2.2% of the two-plus-acre lot. In talking to the mayor and Amy and other individuals within the city, it's obvious that I'm going to have to downsize again. It has to be at least four car, four overhead doors. Each overhead door is about nine feet wide, and you need room in between and a bathroom. The least width I can come up with is 52 feet. If we take 1,200 square feet, which is what is in your current code, that makes the depth of the building then 23 feet. Interior space clear would be about 21 feet. A pickup today is 20 feet long. We couldn't even get a pickup truck into the building. What I would like to propose is 2% of the current lot size. That would be 1,790 square feet. The property currently is a little over two acres. Your current code at 1,200 square feet, that would be 2% of 1 and 1/3 acres for a lot size. I'm proposing 2% of a two-plus-acre lot. Now, the pictures that we have shows the location where we're proposing, also shows what we're planning on building. We're talking about an attractive building, something that will enhance the area. It goes along with Weber Court. There are other buildings on Weber Court that are similar to this. Oh, I've taken down already a couple of buildings. I took down a metal shed that was a large quantity hut. I took down an outhouse that went back to the Miller Brewing stages. And this is what I'm proposing to build.
Nice.
So it's an attractive structure. Go to the next picture. That's what the back of it looks like. We've omitted the top portion because there will be no access other than like a pull downstairs to a five-and-a-half-foot attic. These are garage doors at my current house, and we plan on putting a similar type of garage door so that it looks like a carriage house. This is the property. If you go up a little bit, Amy, you can see where I have positioned the location of the garage. I've got it in two different positions. One would be exactly along the 30-foot offset to the neighborhood to the south where Elmer Tempti lives. The other one has an angle of about 17 degrees. And I would kind of look to you guys for recommendations on how you think it would be best oriented. I think that if it's oriented toward, at the 17 degrees, then it kind of makes it looking at the curve along Weber Court. If I keep it at 90 degrees, then it's more just straight north, south, east, west. If you go back to the.
Just trying to show, I know.
And you said, somebody said in the beginning, there's five continuous lots that you own? What, that's not the.
Four.
Four. That's not the squiggly orange lines that are on that one?
No, here, let me, can I, Terry, can I just quick go through that with them?
Sure.
The properties. Okay, so on GIS, you can see the parcel that he wants to construct, the outbuilding is highlighted in yellow.
Yep.
He owns the adjacent property to the north of Nagawicka Road, that's pretty wooded.
Got it.
That's a 2.77-acre lot. And then his main house is on the lake on the west side of Nagawicka Road. That's 1.74 acres. And then he also owns that narrow, narrow lot north of that, which is about a half an acre.
Got it. Thank you.
See, that's what I said. We have seven acres, but somebody put a road through them. If they were contiguous, then we would have no problem.
And the issue is, according to our kind of rules of law, if you will, that it's just the size of the structure versus the amount on that particular part, it's just a little bit over.
So, yes, and if, you'll remember, we talked for months, I don't, four or six months, on accessory structures, a lot of effort was put into determining the appropriate size. And at the end, plan commission recommended 2% or 1,200 square feet, whichever is more restrictive, unless they have three acres. So if they had three acres or larger, then they could propose more than 1,200 square feet with plan commission approval.
Yeah.
So they have two acres.
So do you rent the house that's, if you go back to that, the house that's on Nagawicka, you rent that then?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, that is the original caretaker's house for the Miller Brewing family. When the Miller Brewers had that as their summer home, that was the caretaker's house that took care of the property. The house was built in 1923. We've upgraded it, and we have tenants in it.
Yeah. I will just say, as a gut reaction, the architecture of that building is beautiful. And in that area, that Weber Court, there are some huge structures. Now granted, they're single-family homes, but they are really big. So something like that would not stick. That would still look pretty small compared to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to make that as a point.
2% or 1,200, whichever is less, what is the 2% calculation then for this?
So it would be.
2% of the two acres is 1,790. It's a little over two acres.
1,790 square feet.
You concur?
I've got 1,742, but I just did two acres exactly.
Yeah, I came up with 1,742. It's 2.05557 or something like that. So it comes out to be exactly 1,790. Hey, if you guys approve 1,742, I'm real happy.
Where, how are you going to access this garage, from a separate road off of Weber or?
Yes.
A separate driveway, I mean.
It would be a separate drive off of Weber. Access on to Nagawicka Road is bad enough.
Oh, I agree. I don't want to see that.
So there's no way that we would go.
Is it where you're clearing, you've cleared some trees right there? That's basically what you're talking about, right there?
Yes, so you've gone by and seen where I've taken.
I walked the dogs by there.
I take out, I took out the old quantity hut.
Yeah.
I took out the outhouse.
Yeah.
I got rid of all the dead trees and cleaned that whole place up. As a matter of fact, the grass is now starting to grow.
Yeah, it's inside.
Are there any regulations on number of driveways on a parcel?
Apparently not.
Okay.
But I do.
Just want to clear that.
Yes, I, we did talk about that. There's not, but I also just want to add, he actually is limited to 1,200 square feet aggregate accessory structure square footage, and there is a detached garage on the property, so what he would be allowed is less than 1,200 square feet. We did talk about how he could attach the garage to the house by a simple breezeway or something to eliminate the other structure from the calculation. And I can't remember, Terry.
And we're happy to do that.
Were you opposed to attaching the north lot through an outlot as an outlot that can't be sold separately? We did, we talked about that, did we not?
We talked about, well, we talked about it. And I think my response to that was that the 2.77-acre lot is my wife's park. As long as she's alive, we won't build it.
Good man.
The way I'm thinking about this is, we went through all that work and came up thinking that this was a reasonable improvement. That doesn't mean if we had adopted, what would accommodate, the applicant is unreasonable, but it's not what we thought fully approved. And we can go back and take another bite at the apple and see there's a more reasonable approach than the one we came up with, but absent that, I don't.
Well, the only, so far, the only rationale I've heard for piercing this ordinance is the applicant has multiple nearby lots, and it's an attractive structure. And it is an attractive structure, but I don't know that that's enough to change, to pierce that ordinance.
That's where I'm at now, absent us saying, we've come up with a better idea, let's go back and take another bite at the apple.
Yeah.
The one thing we did talk to Terry about was possibly reducing the size of the structure, but putting up multiple structures on the various lots. At one point, they were proposing an accessory structure on the long and narrow parcel. He's trying to accommodate a certain amount of equipment and vehicles, but it could possibly be done by breaking up the structures. The reason why I asked about preserving the north lot is potentially it would require city attorney review, but if you were willing to preserve it, it's possible that could somehow be included in the acreage. That would mean keeping it as a park essentially, but in perpetuity.
That's, while I'm alive, that's fine. I have two sons and a daughter. I'm not sure I should make that determination.
Terry, if you put this up now, 20 years from now, isn't it kind of an orphan facility? Or are you saying it's always going to be connected to the house west on the lake?
No, it would be part of that property.
Right, but it's got Weber Court, it's got Weber Drive going across it. But you feel like that's what that is, is that that's a unit together? Where you live and then across the street from Weber Street will be?
It is to me now.
Yeah. Just clarifying, just asking, yeah.
You know, I walk across it, or I take my ranger and go across it. But it is now.
If you, and if you downsize it, keep the concept, downsize it to what's compliant per code, is it just too much of a stretch for what you feel you can accomplish?
That's what I said to you, that if you take a, four garage doors, each garage door has to be nine feet wide today. You have the space in between the garage doors, the space at the end of the garage doors, and there's a bathroom. You're at 52 feet. You divide 52 feet into 1,200, and you come with 23. So the depth of it is 23 feet. That gives you 21 feet clear. Pickup truck is 20 feet. That means you couldn't even park a pickup truck inside of it. And so it, it makes it an unusable garage.
Could you go down to three, though, three garage?
I go down to three store, you know, I can't put my toys in, in a three-car garage. They're in 2,700 square feet today. And so I'm downsizing. If I go down to this 1790 or 1742 or whatever it ends up being, I can make it work, kind of. At 1,200 square foot, I can't do it.
So the vehicle to do it would be, I mean, there's, there was a couple of ideas that we, that we went over. One of them would be, he's asking us to change the ordinance and open this type of flexibility up to any other lot in the city. So was this an unintended consequence that we didn't even contemplate to say, well, if someone's got a really good reason, they can have an 1,800-square-foot building when we were saying 1,200 is the, is the reasonable amount for a two-acre parcel? Or put, put land in a conservation and see if we could annex the two of them and say, okay, well, now you've got the lot area that's dedicated to accommodate a building like this, and that doesn't seem desirable. Or make the building smaller and divide them up into different parcels where there is the square footage, and that doesn't seem desirable either. So that, this was the puzzle he brought us, and we're just sharing it with you. And heard two people say that they're not, that the uniqueness of this situation isn't compelling enough to undo the ordinance we just put in place as of right now. Is that a general sentiment or...
Well, I, I agree with what you said, because I've learned on this commission, when you start making exceptions, it's a slippery slope, right?
Yeah.
The next person that comes in, you know, and then you're saying no to that, it's just a circular argument. What I struggle with on this one is that, as it looks, again, fits that area very well.
Right, but you brought up minus the relationship with the current situation with who owns it and who's using it.
Yeah.
How does that work in 20 years when you're looking at this building versus the home that's actually on the lot?
There's some homes right next to him that have out garages that are hu, the homes are huge and the garages are huge.
So my understanding, if they were constructed per, per permit, is that the accessory structures on Weber Court are 1,200 square feet.
Are they?
That's, that's...
The new house going up? I don't know.
That's what Scott was saying.
That's according to the building inspector, that they are 1,200 square feet.
Including that new one that's going up?
I think the one on the old Zimmerman property is a little bigger than 1,200.
If it's not 1,200, it should have come to plan.
Mike Reels is probably 1,200. But Mike Reels is only a three-car garage, but it is 1,200.
So the rails extra is, you would say that's 1,200?
I'd say theirs is probably 1,200, but the one on Zimmerman's, the old Zimmerman property with the 18,000-square-foot house, yeah, it's pretty good-sized.
Does, does that new one going up have an outbuilding?
Yes.
And, and have you, have you walked down, is it, you think it's bigger than 1,200?
I have not walked on their property.
Okay.
They're, they don't like walking on their property.
Yep, yep. So that, that's my struggle, is it really does fit that area very nicely. It's an upgrade to what's there now. You've done a nice job cleaning it up, so I'm conflicted, because I hear what we're saying is a slippery slope, make exception, Terry, right? Then the next person has a different story, and we got to accept, so I, I'm struggling with it.
Well, what's wrong with 2%? If you had an acre and a third, 2% is 1,200 square feet. At two acres, what's wrong with 1742? I mean, if you think about it on a proportional basis, why wouldn't and why shouldn't it be capable of having a percentage? Why, why create 1,200? It's, it's like putting yourselves into a box, that why did you do it?
I think, I think what we did, if I remember right, because I was here, it was because there was a request, and we were concerned somebody was creating a big storage facility to rent, I think.
Well...
Was that part of that?
They're, the larger they get, sometimes the, the conversion of commercial to, in human habitation is more readily, that opportunity is available. But we did start these amendments, if, we went through several different renditions.
Closer to the mic, you're saying?
We started with 2%. We gave percentages and square footages based on lot size, and, and you all decided that 1,200 square feet is where you kind of drew the line on lots less than three acres, because those are the, mainly in the subdivisions and the areas with smaller lots, your R1, your R2, or RE1, RE2, and RE3 are all usually three acres or less. It might be more than three acres that you have to have for 1,200 square feet, or to go over 1,200 square feet.
Amy, he wants you closer to the mic.
Oh.
It's greater than three.
Greater than three. So I think the idea was that most subdivision environments and the, and it accounts for RE1, RE2, RE3 are typically the three acre and less. And that, if I remember correctly, and we can grab the minutes from all the meetings, that there really wasn't any reason to have larger accessory structures in those types of environments.
You know, I think to the applicant, maybe the box we defined is too small. But if it is, the solution to meet to that, given that the ink is barely dry on this, is to, when the agenda allows, to thoughtfully rethink it and see if there's a better way. But to make an exception to a code that we spent months thinking through...
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't be able to give an exception, you'd have to amend the code.
Okay, well, then it's a matter...
Oh, we would, yeah.
Yes.
Then it's just a matter in my mind of offline, I look at you, Amy, or you and, and Tim, and, you know, did we get this right? And if not, at some point, you know, you put it back on the agenda, and we take another kick at it and sharpen the pencil. I don't, I wouldn't object to that.
You know what's interesting about this, just thinking about it? If that, if you were trying to put that on the other side of the road where your house is, it would feel like it's too big and too much, or, you know what I mean? I feel like the, the road is a little bit of a natural mental break to that garage.
I, I think the difference is the, the, one's a long, narrow lot.
Yeah.
The other one's square.
Yeah.
And so in the square lot, you have this more volume, and it doesn't feel like you're crowding it.
Yeah.
If you take a long, narrow lot and you put more structures on it, it appears to get busy, and it gets crowded. Adding another garage to our lot, what, 1.77 acres, it would look busy. Besides, you have to take down a bunch of really old trees, which I wouldn't do. And so, and the lot next door, that's the old Eli Schmidt lot. That lot had a garage on it. And when we built the house, we were, we could leave the garage there, and we could have upgraded it and left it there. It didn't look good. It wasn't an attractive lot with that extra garage on it, and so we took the garage down. I'm, I'm concerned about looks. I'm concerned about how things feel, and, and I want it to look nice.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's a beautiful building, it's the size. And to your comment, Dan, you think the buildings there are huge and they're 1,200 square feet, the old buildings, this would be 1,900 square feet. So you got to look at what you think is big there already.
Yeah.
And making it even bigger.
Fair point.
Well, I'm not asking for 1,900. I'm asking you to...
1790.
1790, 1742.
500 square feet.
Still a 40% increase.
Over what Dan has already seen, looks like some pretty big.
I think a prudent way to attack this is kind of a combination with Scott just mentioned, and that is, I mean, I'm willing to put this on the agenda for next meeting to look, review the bullet points of our discussion points that we went through, where we arrived at this, 1,200 max for the three acres. I think we can go back in the minutes and pull those out and just highlight those, and we can just discuss if we wanted to actually revisit it formally, then that would be like going into August then.
Yeah.
In other words, like, let's review the notes and see if this is just an unfortunate, unintended consequence, or if this was intentional, and that it's for a good reason. And I think we can accomplish that in a, you know, a 15-minute overview in our next meeting. I, I don't think we're going to, in other words, I don't think we're going to advance the ball anymore tonight. I think we've got the general gist of what your goals are, and we appreciate them. But I think if we, if we take that course, I think that'd be a good, good way to move this along.
I like it. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can also have Scott pull those permits, so you can see what they look like at 1,200.
I would double-check those, yeah.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Okay, we review this tomorrow morning, so Amy will have some homework.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, next item up is 10F, D E L C 0783983, 1131 Mariner Drive, Nagawicke Yacht Club. Herb Rasmussen, applicant is requesting feedback regarding a consent presentation and to schedule a public hearing to amend the text of Chapter 52 zoning ordinance of the municipal codes, code specifically 5225H, to allow boathouses on properties used for yacht club purposes. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
All right, come on up and please introduce yourself.
Herb Rasmussen, 3098 Stonebridge Isle, Telfield.
Welcome. Amy, why don't you give us a overview?
So the, if you're familiar with the yacht club property, they own property adjacent to Nagawicke Park. It is zoned RL2. They do have a conditional use for the yacht club facility, and they came to meet with me and Scott months ago and proposed a boathouse. And the answer to their question to have a boathouse was that they couldn't, because you can only have a boathouse if it's accessory to a single-family dwelling. And the way the code reads is no boathouse is permitted unless a single-family dwelling is already present on the lot, and only one boathouse per lot is allowed. So they did start exploring, moving the structure back to meet the shore setback, and I believe it's 50, is it 50-foot setback?
It was 50 feet, correct.
50-foot setback. And the challenge that they just run into, I mean, if they absolutely have to, they will make that work, but because they are a yacht club facility, what they are storing in there truly is sailboat-type equipment. And so they would like us to reconsider their original proposal for a boathouse, and by doing so, requesting a text amendment to state accessory to a single-family dwelling or approved yacht club use. And then it would read, no boathouse is permitted unless a single-family dwelling is already present on the lot or the boathouse is part of a yacht club use approved as a conditional use. Only one boathouse per lot is allowed.
So should yacht clubs have boathouses? That's kind of the question.
And do we, do we need to define yacht club, Amy, somewhere?
Well, we actually, Tim brought up that same thing today. The only thing I would say is it does require a conditional use permit to have a yacht club, so you would be reviewing the use and its applicability at that time. We, alternatively, we could certainly come up with some definition.
So are, are boathouses usual and customary on, with yacht clubs on other lakes?
I don't know.
I guess that's the question, right?
Yeah, well, certainly.
I think what's customary is the storage of a whole bunch of boat equipment, so would you rather that all be outside or...
It'd be nice to have one on our lake that has boat equipment in it.
Where do you currently store your, the equipment that would go in here?
Well, we have a current shed in the same general location that we wanted to build a more permanent structure. The shed's too small for our current use, it's about nine by eight. And we like to build something larger to store some opti-sailboats, mass sails. Opti-sailboats are a beginner sailboat. We have 67 young, young children that are in the opti-program, sailing school program, and their ages are generally from six years to 12 years.
So the shed versus the boathouse is a question of proximity, and instead of carrying it five feet, you have to carry it 30 feet now?
Correct. And closer to the water is much more convenient for these young children to move equipment and, and the boats, even though they may, some of them be on dallys. And part of our plan would also, well, would conform to any of the boathouse regulations, it's just a matter of having it closer to the lake, similar to where our, our current shed is.
Would you remove the shed if this was approved?
Would we move it? We would remove it.
Remove?
It's...
Over it, it would be in the same spot.
It's pretty...
It would be in the same...
Pretty cheap and junky.
Okay.
Mike, can you put the survey up, maybe the full? So if you can see his red drawing of the proposed boathouse, inside of that, there's an eight-by, eight-by, 8.2 by 9.8 structure in there.
And that's being removed.
Removed.
Yeah. So it's not even on, up to the water? It's still off the water?
It's still off the water. Boathouses have to meet definitions. I think it has to be within 50 feet, so he does have to, he actually has to push it closer to the water. But yes, it is 50.
You'd put it, you'd make it so it was right on the water or no?
I think there's regs on that as well.
Yeah, you got to be off the water.
You have to be off the water.
We would be, it's probably back of the water 10 feet, something like that.
Yeah.
I'm allowing for the fact that I have to put a rain garden in, boathouse regulations, so drainage would probably be towards the water for the rainwater garden.
And we got to talk about that, because you don't want to put it right in front of the structure, because you're going to want to walk through that?
It would probably be to the north of the structure.
It's Lake Welfer, right? I mean, they'll guide you along that.
Yeah, we can debate it.
But it's as simple as just adding, and a yacht club to that.
Do we want to schedule a public hearing to add yacht clubs to our approved boathouse location?
I'm, I'm all right with that. And I think with the conditional use, I feel comfortable with it.
What happens if the Commodore comes and says, what about me?
They would not, well, the way it reads, they would not be able to come in for a boathouse, although they have one, so they can keep what they have.
Yeah, they have one there.
They have a two-story boathouse.
Oh, yeah. And they just put in a, I'm going to estimate a half a million-dollar permanent pier, so they can't put it there.
Yeah, so you either, you would either have to have a dwelling or be a yacht club.
Okay.
Someone want to move to get a public hearing? Next meeting good? Be ready for the next one? Okay.
I'll make a motion to have a public hearing to do a text amendment to include yacht clubs.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Okay, we'll have a public hearing, move this along.
Thank you.
Good luck. Item 11, comprehensive zoning and ordinance revisions. A, discussion and possible action to amend the text of Chapter 52 zoning ordinance to municipal codes, specifically 52111AF, and possible other sections related to the topic in order to modify the CBD 2, Central Business District standards.
Okay. Do you want to come on up?
That's right, we have an applicant.
You do have an applicant. Okay, I'll go ahead.
Why don't you introduce yourself? Name and address, please.
Kirsten Miller, W 311 and 7001, Club Circle West, Heartland.
Thank you.
Okay, so the applicant, Chris, has been the one attending the previous meetings. Originally came in to propose to amend the property across the street from CBD 2 to CBD 1, but there were concerns related to not having parking requirements in CBD 1, and then also the height of buildings can be quite a bit taller. So, and he did understand and appreciated those concerns, and did agree to amend the tech, that he would support a text amendment to CBD 2 instead of pursuing the CBD to CBD 1 district. And with that, it would read that, so under each section, that the setbacks and floor ratio would not apply to properties that directly about Genesee Street and that are listed in the section, because there are a few exceptions. So if, when you go to the text, you'll just see under each and every one of those, minimum front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks, corner side yard, rear yard, it says that that setback does not apply to those properties that are but directly on Genesee Street as listed in subsection 15. And then if you go to subsection 15, it lists the address, addresses, and I highlighted one. one. So before this goes, passes to common council, I just want to make sure we talk about the properties that we may want to consider not including. So I already excluded this residential facility that just abuts Genesee Street through, with two flags, otherwise it doesn't really have direct access on Genesee Street. That's already part of a plan unit development and is developed. So that would not, that property would not get the same exception as the rest of the properties. And then I'm just asking that you consider the Town Bank property south of it. The reason being is that property is separated from the rest of the CBD-2 through, because of that driveway to the residential properties, and then it's also in line with those houses south of it, which are subject to the 10-foot road setback and, and I think generally CBD-2 district setbacks and floor ratio, et cetera. So maintaining the requirements on Town Bank would allow it to align with the homes, or you could choose to change it, and then it would align with the more intense downtown environment. So I'd be looking for your action on that, and if you so choose to remove that address, then I would just take it out for the ordinance that goes to council. And then I did highlight another section, we talked about it a little bit as staff, and decided that that's opening up a can of worms, and we can, we can wait for a later date if we want to change it. And it was the floor ratio section. It's just a little bit confusing, because what it essentially says is, if you use off-site property for parking, then you can use that off-site property that you used for parking to benefit you for floor ratio. So there's some scenarios where that may make sense, and there's some scenarios where that probably doesn't make sense at all if it's not adjacent.
Yeah, I thought of a couple where you would be building a high-rise, potentially.
Well, you would be limited by height, but-
Well-
But you could have, you're artificially creating a lot size that isn't there.
Right. Density where you don't want it because of that comment.
But that other lot has to be within 800 feet, correct?
Yes, and so the counter to that would be if it's directly adjacent to it, and the whole property is open space and just used for parking, then you are just consolidating the building to a portion of those properties. I would argue that those properties could just be combined then, and should be a single lot of record.
But they don't have to be contiguous slots, the way this reads, right?
Right, they don't have to, right.
Right. So I'm not sure that relationship.
So it's kind of changing, we don't want to complicate the original request, and we haven't discussed this. When I was just reading through the whole section, I had never really read that provision before, or even knew it was there, and it is a bit confusing. If you want to tackle it right away, so be it, but otherwise, that could come back as a future amendment, and we would just leave that section alone.
I'm fine with that.
Come back at a later date?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, just move forward with what we've worked on.
Yep. Okay. So thoughts on 400 Genesee Street, though? That's the Town Bank south of City Hall and south of that multi-tenant building.
In our discussions, it seemed that that offers a nice buffer and transition area between the homes and then where this other, more intense development could go on, and that seemed reasonable to me anyways.
No, I agree with that.
Yeah.
And there's plenty of parking at Town Bank. There's not a parking issue at all there.
Correct.
Remove it? Consensus, remove that property, so it does not, it's not allowed the same exception?
If I'm understanding that correctly, yes.
Is that what you're recommending? It is, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Okay. So if this goes through, then the rest of the properties on Genesee Street would not be subject to setbacks and floor ratio, but they would be subject to the CBD-2 parking and height requirements. And if you so choose, you can recommend adoption of the enclosed ordinance, amending the text of Section 52111AF in order to modify the CBD-2 Central Business District standards, subject to city attorney review, and then subject to removing that 400 Genesee Street. And the city attorney did, has not commented yet, I did provide him the ordinance, he may tweak the way that that sentence reads on each of those statements, but it will, the intent will be the same.
Makes sense to me.
So we need a motion to that effect.
I'll, I'll make the motion. I might need Amy's help to make it a-
Recommend to council, too, to have.
Can you?
Recommend to council.
Yeah. Recommend to council pursuant to the planners' and city attorney's review, the modification of CBD-2 district.
And removal of 400-
And removal of 400 Street.
400 Genesee Street.
The Genesee Street.
You got that? Okay. That translated well.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Okay. Moving along the process, it'll go to, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
She's thinking, I'll never get those two hours of my life.
You will not.
Chris is the one in trouble.
Yes, good for him. Okay. 11B, discussion and possible action to schedule a public hearing to amend the text of Chapter 52 zoning ordinance municipal code regarding certain conditional uses that are permitted in Section 52142, specifically as they relate to the restrictions for drive-through windows and community and other group living arrangements. Amy?
Okay. So we've talked about this a couple times. The idea behind these amendments would to add a provision under, for the community living arrangements conditional use to make sure that it's clear that the city has the opportunity to deny these requests if the capacity limitations have been met, and that their approval would be at the discretion of the city. And then, drive-through windows for restaurants, we talked about it the last meeting, removing them from the availability of a conditional use in the CBD-1 district. And then I'm just asking that you also consider whether or not they should be removed from the B1 districts, which includes B1 and B1A. And then I did list the properties that are in those districts, so that would include a few properties north of Vettalison Road, which have like a mix of business and residential type uses. And then there's properties on the east and west side of Cushing Park Road, south of Main Street, which includes Kurt's Steakhouse, and then the adjacent property to the east. And then there's the municipal parking lot west of the Green Development, which that's kind of like CBD-1, and should probably be zoned institutional, but either way, that would be excluded then. Hawkson Historical Society, the two properties south of Milwaukee Street, adjacent to Nagawica Lake, which includes the blue structure that's been coming in with Adonis roofing and straight-edge flooring. Laura's looking like, it's really close to the water, or it's right across the street from the water.
East of Fishbones.
Yes.
Do you want to drive through there?
And then, I believe Fishbones is also B1, and then two properties south of Heritage Drive. This one's a little, it's, it's the two office buildings as you come into the entrance to that target area. So the very first two, those probably would not end up having uses with drive-throughs anyway. It really is constructed and built as, as office-type buildings, so it's just probably why it's zoned B1.
Yeah.
So those are the properties. If those are all excluded, then really, drive-through windows for restaurants would only be allowed in the B2 district as a conditional use. To note that in B3, B4, and B6, they're allowed by right. So that's your Hardee's, McDonald's, Burger King, those are, they're allowed by right there.
Yeah.
And then, last month, we talked about tobacco shops. We've, I've been advised by the city attorney to just hold off on that, I think he has some other ideas. So the recommendation would be to provide feedback, so we can potentially schedule a hearing for July.
I'm fine with the recommendations.
I think it looks good.
Yeah, this makes sense.
I read it all.
Anyone wants to schedule a public hearing?
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing regarding the proposed text amendments. Hearing date would be July 31, 2024.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Okay, public hearing, another public hearing for next month. Okay, reports of city officials, correspondence is in the packet. Amy, do you have anything for us?
I do not.
Okay. Scott is not here, so it'd be no for the building inspector. Question, meeting dates and deadlines, regular meeting is July 31, 2024, and meeting's middle deadline is July 3. Hearing no other business. The meeting is now adjourned at 8:30. Thank you, everyone.